And a good evening to you Ted Langdell at UBSutter dot lives control center. And we're about to get underway with the Uba City Council regular meeting, which is basically getting underway as soon as they come into the council chambers and resume from a closed session earlier today. What's coming up in addition to the Uba City Council regular meeting? Well, we have baseball will be over at Bryant Field in Marysville sometime after the Uba City uni or Uba City Council meeting concludes and we can get over to Bryant Field from our headquarters here. And as that happens, we'll be bringing you spot coverage, not live the whole game, but we'll be giving you little updates throughout the game to give you a sample of what the baseball game is like in Bryant Field with new lights, a new stadium scoreboard, all kinds of stuff going on. And we are waiting for the council to get underway. And we want to let you know that our meetings are brought to you by.
UBSutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self storage in Plumas Lake where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals details at Plumas Lake self storage.com.
There are other things going on in UBSutter. Let's give you a little taste of that.
For 70 years, we have flown at 70,000 feet. Beal Air Force Base invites you to the Beal Air and Space Expo, celebrating a legacy of reconnaissance. Witness an astonishing lineup of aerial performances on June 7th and 8th. Free tickets are available at Beal air show.com.
You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs like temporary campaign style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company on the web at Sapphire Marketing Group.net. Sapphire.
We're distributed the council prior to tonight. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden, Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Present.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Great. If you would please stand, we will have the invocation and the pledge tonight. Our invocation will be led by Councilmember Wade Kirchner and our pledge will be led by Councilmember Tony Cole.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we move into the Memorial Day season, we are once again reminded of the sacrifice others made so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we do, the freedom to live in a country where we can freely assemble and to elect representatives who listen to our concerns and act upon them as a body. We've been given that awesome and sacred responsibility. Give us your wisdom so at the end of the evening, your will is done in your name we pray.
Mr. Chaffin, I know we're still going back into the special closed session afterwards. Do we have anything to report though at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session and we will be reajourning back in, but don't anticipate any reportable action at that time either.
Okay, perfect. Is there any agenda modifications by the council? Okay, seeing none.
The mayor, if I could make a clarification on consent item number 13, which is the Richland Village affordable housing funding. It's supplemental appropriation for $1 million. Staff's recommendation is the same. The only clarification is, is the applicant is requesting that HCD approve a smaller unit amount. And staff just wanted to be clear that the money would not be actually spent and given to them until all HCD approvals had been achieved, whether that be for a reduced unit amount or the unit amount they're currently approved at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that point of clarification. All right, so no other agenda modifications, then we will move on to the fun stuff before we get down to business. The first one tonight is we will have the retirement proclamation for Jackie Lee. They finally let you out, didn't they? If you'd be so kind as to join us down front. You know, there's people in your, in your community that are really like glue that holds everything together and can we get a tissue? But Jackie, before we get into the proclamation of stuff, and I'm sure everybody up here will want to say a few words because you have been that, that glue for so many years with the chamber and helping businesses and just really taking care of all of us over the years. And so before we get into this, I would just like to say on behalf of everyone, thank you for all your years of service and it's an honor for us to recognize you tonight. So actually, before I do the proclamation, would you guys like to say a few words? Cause this is.
Your smile, your greeting, the support has been phenomenal. I'm losing my voice, but for you, I had to say a few words. So there you go.
Thank you for everything that you've done and continue to do for our community.
Thank you, Jackie, for all you've done. I know you've, all your hard work left the organization in really good hands and so they'll take it from here.
Congratulations on moving on. That's, that's a big step and your void is going to be felt and the best of luck to you in the future.
We're just going to expect more out of Janelle back there, so. No pressure. So with that, Jackie, we're going to go ahead and read the, your retirement proclamation here. So this is in honor of your retirement, whereas Jackie Lee has served the UBSutter Chamber of Commerce with exceptional dedication for over 20 years, playing a vital role in strengthening the business community of Uba City and the surrounding region. Your service has directly supported the growth of local businesses, promoted community engagement, and uplifted the economic vitality of our city. She has a familiar face and a friendly presence at countless events, ribbon cuttings, and initiatives, always offering her time, energy, and expertise to ensure the success of others. And don't cut yourself with the scissors. That was always reminded. Jackie's love for the UBSutter region have made a lasting impact on our community and the people who live and work here. And whereas your retirement marks the end of an era, but the legacy of service and connection with the, will continue to inspire for years to come. So therefore let it be resolved that I Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Uba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize and honor Jackie Lee for her outstanding contributions to our city and region. And we thank her for her years of service and celebrate her achievements and extend our very best wishes on your retirement.
Would you like to say a few words?
I, I, I don't know what to say other than that I loved this job. It was the best and I love this community and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do what I did for so many years.
Thank you. Would you like to get a picture? Okay. Yeah, where's the chicken? Thank you. Thank you. Do we need music? All right. The next is going to be the National Police Week. If I can have interim chief Runyon come on down and join us. That's what I was about to do. Chief, would you like the rest of your team to come on down this year? Absolutely. If you're NPD, come on down. First of all, thank you guys for being here tonight and thank you for all that you do. I know on behalf of the city, the city council, all of our residents, we cannot say thank you enough because you allow us to go home every evening and rest in peace and security. And even during the day, you guys are always there keeping a watchful eye and keeping us safe. And you know, even pulling over a mayor or two when we speed, I'm sure. So, so, but anyway, we're going to read the proclamation and then chief, I'll let you say a few words if you would like. National Police Week is May 11th through the 17th. Whereas in 1962, President JFK signed a proclamation designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, an annual observance to honor the nation's fallen law enforcement officers as men and women of courage, judgment, courage, judgment, and dedication. National Police Week is a time of reflection and appreciation for the ultimate sacrifices made by, by the exceptionally dedicated men and women of law enforcement who were killed or disabled in the line of duty. It is important that all citizens understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by protecting the innocent against deceptions and the weak against oppression or intimidation. The City of Uba City is grateful for the day-to-day heroism of our officers, both past and present, as well as our families who have given so much of their lives in service to our community. The city council of the City of Uba City wishes to honor all the police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives and have become dis- or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. May we always remember their tremendous sacrifice and the loved ones they left behind. Now therefore be it resolved that I Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Uba City, on behalf of the entire city council and the citizens we serve, do hereby recognize and honor the men and women of law enforcement whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Would you stand and give these men and women a rounding applause? Do you like to say a few words?
I'll keep it short, but thank you for the support this community gives us, these men and women up here. It's an incredibly difficult job these days. There's a lot of, a lot of pressure on law enforcement just in general for all the services we provide, but they, they give their best every day dedication to do the best for this community. So I appreciate everything they do.
Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause and thank you guys. Thank you for everything. You still need a picture? I think I moved too quick. Do you still need? Okay. You want me to run to the back? All right. Again, thank you. Right where I left off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. All right. We're going to move on to the next item, which is Adventist Health and Write Out. And we are honored tonight to have CEO Chris Champlin. Chris, would you join us? And you can actually join us at the main podium if you'd like, sir, over there.
Thank you, Mayor Shaw, council, council members. I thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to come and talk tonight. I'm here to deliver the sad disappointing news that after years and years of your support and support by other elected officials, we are not going to be able to move forward with Project Hope Major. Just as a reminder, that was the project that we were working towards to take the old Fremont Hospital and convert it to a facility that would offer behavioral health and crisis continuation services. There were a host of factors that played into that decision. The services that are, were to be offered there are constantly coming under attack from a funding perspective. I think everybody's been following the news so you know that both Medi-Cal and Medicare funding is, is under consideration for being substantially cut. The services that we're going to offer weren't penciling. And then the money that was coming to us in the form of a grant, the, the restrictions on that got tighter and tighter and tighter until it got to the point where we just couldn't accept the money in good faith. So we had to make the very disappointing decision to pull out of that. So I wanted to come and make it official. Thank you to all of you for supporting that project for as long as you did. You wrote letters, you advocated on it, on its behalf to both locally and in Sacramento. Mayor Shaw, thank you for, for everything that you've done. Councilman Boomgarden, you, you were both absolutely champions of that and I appreciated the communication that we've had on it over, over the years. So thank you and, and that's the whole message is I, it's sad news.
All right. Chris, thank you for being here tonight and thank you for getting together with us recently. I know the vice mayor myself met with, with yourself and you told us about Project Hope and what was going on there. And I look forward to continuing the dialogue going forward between the city and, and Adventist. Is there any questions or anything from the council? Does anybody have anything? All right.
I would just add one more thing. We still really, really need those services. So if we can find a way to do it, we'll continue to work, but thank you for your support.
How many millions was that, Chris?
Oh goodness, we were looking at $36 million in grant funds to rehab the facility. And then the operations of the facility should have covered itself. But again, with that, with that, the services being cut and then it just, it wasn't penciling out, so.
Right. It was a huge project. We hate to see it go, but at the same time we understand. So hopefully there'll be another day that we are able to put something together.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item four, appearance of interested citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment of any other, on any other item within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public this evening on things that are not on the agenda? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no, no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Clarification, Mr. Chaffin, do you want to repeat the, the additional information on item, I think it was 13?
Certainly I can do that. This is the Richland Village Affordable Housing Funding. Basically, city council is being asked for an appropriation of $1 million, which has been previously approved. The only clarification, we're not changing the recommendation from staff, the only clarification is that the Richland Village Affordable Housing is going back to HCD to see if they can reduce the number of units, given the increase in costs. And staff just wanted to make clear that this appropriation would not actually issue any checks until HCD had signed off on whatever unit count was, was agreed to.
All right. Thank you. Is there any public comment on consent calendar items five through 13? Any public comment on consent calendar items five through 13? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comments, questions, or actions.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve consent calendar items five through 13 with the modification on item number 13.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. We will move on now to agenda item 14, AB 2561, Status of Vacancies, Recruitments, and Retention Efforts. Gina, you're with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. In January 1st of this year, a new California law, AB 2561, became effective and it requires a public agency to present the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts during a public hearing before the governing body and at least once per fiscal year and prior to the adoption of the final budget. So this report is simply to comply with this new law. The, the law also requires that the agency identify any necessary changes to policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process. And the recognized employee organization for a bargaining unit is entitled to be here during this public hearing and make a presentation on the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. All city bargaining units have been notified of the public hearing and have received a copy of this presentation and I don't believe there's anyone here to present. So the attachment to the staff report detailed more data for your info, including the vacancy rate by bargaining unit, as well as the vacancy rate by city department. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Is there any questions from the council on this? Any questions from the council on this? Okay. Our action that we're supposed to do is not only receive the report tonight, but we are to conduct a public hearing as required by Government Code Section 3502.3. So with that, I will move to open the public hearing. This is the public hearing is now open on AB 2561, Status of Vacancies, Recruitments, and Retention Efforts and Compliance with Government Code Section 3502.3. Is there any comments from the public under the public hearing? Any comments from the public under the public hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And we have conducted a public hearing and there's really no action other than receive it. So unless there's anything else the council would like, we will move right on to the next agenda item. Thank you. We're going to move on to agenda item 15, which is the Pluma Street Water Tower Plaza Construction Contract Award. Mr. Moody, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Shaw, members of the city council. Thank you. Okay, so this item's been a long time coming here in one of the final steps. And so the item that's before you is in regards to the Clean California Grant for Pluma Street. It's been a multi-phase project. I'll go through real quick and, and really tonight it's to award, consider the award of the plaza area and a potential arch. And so little background, January 22, the city applied for a grant in 2022, March, 2.2 million in funding was received. And then since that time, we've been working through various stages of the grant. And so it definitely was a multi, multi-element grant, you know, it wasn't just to do the concrete, some sidewalks or this, it was the water tower, the sign, Center Street with the festoon lighting, a plaza area, kind of a place making, what that was going to look like. Originally there was hopes for maybe a water feature element and then that led into some issues with, and then murals, digital signs, and even an archway. And so, so the way the city approached it is we broke it down into different jobs and then worked with the DBA, worked with the community on trying to tackle each one. And so tonight, one of the last elements is where staff worked with a designer, worked with the community and put out a bid for the bottom two elements here, this, this, this plaza area down underneath the water tower and then the archway and then the digital event sign. And so unfortunately, what came back, you know, we, we were worried, you know, with these, it's hard to go, know exactly what the bid amount is going to be because it's their specialty items. We're using, you know, references from the, the designer, kind of knowing where things are at, but, and we, we tried to set the bid up so there was bid alternatives. So if it came in a little high, can we delete this or do that? Or if it came in a little low, can we add this? And what it came in is we, we received one bid and it's North Star Construction. We reached out and based on the technicality of it, the timing, you know, the, the different aspects, it's not just a concrete contractor, you know, it's, it's so North Star Construction was the one bid received. North Star Construction, they're very reputable, they're, they're here located in Uba City. We've done work with them, really good work. They've been on our list for, as an emergency contractor. They've done work, you know, building and street work, where they did the extension of the roadway and the sewer system up to Uba College. And so very well known with the city, city staff and the work that they do. Unfortunately, it's just the cost is 2.3 and we have about 1.1.
but we are to conduct a public hearing as required by Government Code Section 3502.3. So with that, I will move to open the public hearing. This is the public hearing is now open on AB 2561, Status of Vacancies, Recruitments, and Retention Efforts, and compliance with Government Code Section 3502.3. Is there any comments from the public under the public hearing? Any comments from the public under the public hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And we have conducted a public hearing, and there's really no action other than receive it. So unless there's anything else the council would like, we will move right on to the next agenda item. Thank you. We're going to move on to agenda item 15, which is the Pluma Street Water Tower Plaza Construction Contract Award. Mr. Moody, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Shaw, members of the city council. Thank you. Okay, so this item's been a long time coming here in one of the final steps. And so the item that's before you is in regards to the Clean California Grant for Pluma Street. It's been a multi-phase project. I'll go through real quick. And and really, tonight, it's to award, consider the award of the plaza area and a potential arch. And so little background, January 22, the city applied for a grant in 2022, March, 2.2 million in funding was received. And then since that time, we've been working through various stages of the grant. And so it definitely was a multi multi-element grant. You know, it wasn't just to do the concrete, some sidewalks or this. It was the water tower, the sign, Center Street with the festoon lighting, a plaza area, kind of a place making, what that was going to look like. Originally, there was hopes for maybe a water feature element. And then that led into some issues with and then murals, digital signs, and even an archway. And so so the way the city approached it is we broke it down into different jobs and then worked with the DBA, worked with the community on trying to tackle each one. And so tonight, one of the last elements is where staff worked with a designer, worked with the community, and put out a bid for the bottom two elements here, this 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 plaza area down underneath the water tower and then the archway and then the digital event sign. And so unfortunately, what came back, you know, we were worried, you know, with these, it's hard to go know exactly what the bid amount is going to be because it's their specialty items. We're using, you know, references from the the designer, kind of knowing where things are at. But and we tried to set the bid up so there was bid alternatives. So if it came in a little high, can we delete this or do that? Or if it came in a little low, can we add this? And what it came in is we received one bid. And it's North Star Construction. We reached out and based on the technicality of it, the timing, you know, the the different aspects, it's not just a concrete contractor, you know, it's so North Star Construction was the one bid received. North Star Construction, they're very reputable. They're they're here located in Uba City. We've done work with them, really good work. They've been on our list for as an emergency contractor. They've done work, you know, building and street work. They did the extension of the roadway and the sewer system up to Uba College. And so very well known with the city, city staff and the work that they do. Unfortunately, it's just the cost is 2.3 and we have about 1.1. And so what do we do? Because that's that's grant money that we don't want to leave on the table. We've got a lot of project. There's a lot of investment, a lot of time that we want to bring forward. And so we scratched our pencil. So we met with the DBA. The DBA, what they provided the feedback is that if you look at these three elements or these multi-elements that remain in this work is you have an archway, you have the plaza and amphitheater area, and you have a digital event sign. And then there's some there's some other items that landscaping, irrigation, lighting, trash receptacles. And so when we get to the heart of it, it's the archway is about $500,000. And then you have this plaza area that's about 1.4, 1.2, depending on how you kind of get into it. And then you have the digital event sign. And so the low hanging fruit was the digital event. Let's get rid of the digital event sign. What start what start working on? Can we cut back some of the landscaping that might be a maintenance issue that we, you know, do we have capacity to handle that anyways? Can we start cutting the the lights? And can we come to a hybrid project that kind of meets everybody's needs? And so what we have for you in consideration tonight is basically it's it's a project light. What we've what we've gone is we've taken kind of all in, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have money to build, build a shade structure, a full-blown structure with all these seat walls. But what what we're proposing is to have the concrete area and the amphitheater with the conduit, strip out all the landscaping except for some trees and decompose granite, get rid of the uplights, get rid of this place structure. We'll still have the area and we'll still value engineer. Maybe we could put some benches in or we could do some sort of concrete walls that are cast in place that are maybe that are cheaper or more value engineered than prefabbed and and bring a project that we're that we deliver the arch. That was the theme of the DBA, but then also set up this the infrastructure for this amphitheater and this plaza area. And so it's above it's above the engineer's estimate. It's above the grant funding. And so I started scratching around with the team as far as where can we pull this from that doesn't affect the general fund. You know, we have some sidewalk budget money. We have a little bit of drainage funding money that I could pull through that would qualify for some of this concrete work. And so what I'm recommending tonight is that for the grants, for the community place setting, to tie in the rest of the work that's been done with the water tower naming, the murals that are in process to come, is that we go with this this light. And then we and then you authorize staff to continue to value engineer and kind of work through this project to bring it in. And so total cost right now is 1.8, where I'm with the contingency. The way this the bid and the low bid, it's a little, it's we're hoping to have some savings with this is the way we have to award was we have to award the full line item amount. But but we believe there's options. Once we award, then we could work through change orders that then reduce some of those line items where all of a sudden it's not 15 trash receptacles, let's do five. And so there could be some cost savings, but that has to be worked out after the award happens. And staff is definitely on board with that and then working with the contractor to make that happen. So this kind of worst case, full in. And so what I'm proposing is staff recommends performing budget transfers from eligible non-general fund funding sources as discussed. Their pavement management system, you know, I put some money in there. That's kind of where you do a reanalysis of the the pavement, you know, every so often. I think at this point in time, it's that's that information gets old. So it's it's collecting data that will get old before you need to use it. And there's some sidewalk money, some drainage improvements that I'm talking about pulling from. So with that, there are alternatives. There are, there could be some savings where you don't do the arch. That's about a $500,000. And then that would leave you enough money for the amphitheater kind of light. It would still be amphitheater light. Or we we cut the amphitheater out. So if you go back into that picture, you bring the concrete line and you bring it back around here, that would save about 200 to $300,000, depending on how we do it and kind of get rid of that area. You know, or or you can reject all bids. And so those are some of the alternatives or different funding sources we could talk about. But that's kind of where we're at, based on the timing, based on, I don't think if we rebid it, you're going to potentially jeopardize the the grants because of the timing. But then are you really going to get much of a better bid? I'm not sure we would. And so that's kind of where we're at. I'd happy to answer any questions or kick around ideas on how to do that. And so with tonight, we're recommending we award a construction contract to North Star for 1.7 with a 5% contingency. And then if they don't agree to that reduced amount, then the bids will be rejected. Authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city and authorize the finance director to make the necessary budget transfers and supplemental appropriations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Is there any questions from the council? Yes, sir.
Thank you for that, Ben. Going that one slide, you talked about how the the contractor could could reject it.
So so, yeah, so since we're we're basically the way the the bid amount was 2.2, 2.3. And so what we're what we're doing is, and it's broken into line items. And so what we're doing is awarding a contract minus a couple of those line items. And so if he doesn't accept the reduction in those line items, then we would reject the bid.
So I'm sorry, so we would reject it?
Yeah, the city would reject the bid.
Okay, okay.
If they if they didn't accept, if the contractor didn't agree to the those reduced scopes of work.
Okay, thank you.
We're confident, there has been some communication that, you know, they're they're on board with value engineering and delivering as a project.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Ben, I got real concern with missing a bid by 100%.
I hear you.
I I I understand, you know, specialty items and such. However, this, I don't know, this just does not bode well with with me as your one of your council members. I'm not disparaging anybody's work whatsoever, but to miss it by 100% that that's that's huge. And this value engineering thing that I keep hearing is nothing more than cheapening up your project. And I I just don't see how this is delivering to to our community of what we envisioned. And unfortunately, sometimes projects just can't get done.
Right, any other comments or questions?
I mean, if I could add, if I could add to that, definitely the concerns. You know, for this type of work, we're relying on an architect, a landscape architect, and not a lot of background on, you know, where these signs come from, you know, like there's a few of them around the the cities, you know, down in Sacramento and different places. I hear you. And in North Star, they historically, they're usually probably the number three, number four bidder on our list as we see bids come through. And that's reflected if I go put a bid back out, it's like, okay, if somehow I make it duration long enough or make it a little bit easier work to do, am I going to get the number down to 1.1? I don't think so. I think with the steel cost, the lead times, the specialty, you know, maybe if you if you really push to get more bidders on there, if you change the bid specs to make it easier, longer timeframes, maybe it's into 1.8, but you're not going to get it at 1.1. We missed we missed it big time.
I get it, Ben. You know, profit margins from the concrete grid might be 25%. The sign people might want 100% markup. You just you don't know. And I and I get that. It's just I in good conscience, one, I can't see taking money from other pots. We've been doing that. I'm on the ad hoc budget committee, and we've been doing those types of things. And it's just, I don't know, it's just it it it's shortchanging, I think, our community just just to just to get it done.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, through the mayor. Thanks, Ben. I really actually love what you and the contributions of the DBA probably have put into this. I like actually the idea of putting in place the infrastructure. But how likely is it that we could get more grant funding for the extras like the playground and putting turf in and finishing the project in the next couple of years?
You know, for me, this is a 50-year deal, right? We're building a community place, you know, that's supposed to last for a long time. And so realistically, the place structure, you know, that could be a CDBG funded, maybe application within a couple of years. But as far as a shade structure, a digital event board, or if you pull that arch out, I really don't see funding coming for that for a long time. I mean, Uba City's been wanting to repaint and do the signage on the tower for the last 20 years. And so things like that, they're they're specialty funding, they're not a priority. And so it's really when these grants come along in order to do that.
Any other questions? All right, yeah, Mr. Moody, I appreciate you bringing this to us. It's sad that we got to pull from other pots, but the cost of this, remember when we first started it, it it's, I remember it going up, 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 the archway for one, you know, the cost of that sucker has gone way up from where we initially started. It was a fraction of the cost. But long term, you know, you talk about future phase install of like the place structure and stuff, because this is this is an area that's going to be for our whole community, you know, to do things. And I think that place structure is important to get there. This area will qualify for the CDBG money in the future. We've used that to replace a lot of playgrounds. Can we use part of our CDBG money in the future to do some of the these improvements? Because this is a total investment by the city into this to this area. So where can we pull from CDBG? Just thinking out of the box for a minute.
It qualifies for construction in a low-income area. And so then it's just the priorities. A lot of times, we pull for sidewalk and ADA ramps. We use it for Kingwood Parks. Right now, we rotate and we try to update a park around the city each year. And so it would just be a matter of, you know, setting that as a priority. But I but I guess it's it's then it's it's what do you what do you cut? You know, because it's if you cut all the concrete, you start to run into a scope problem. You have the Christmas tree, you know, we want we want that as a place setting for for the holidays. And I don't know, you could save a few hundred thousand, but you're not going to get to the 1.1 unless you you pull the arch out.
Yeah, no, 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 I I realized that. I was more focused on what else can we use CDBG for in the future years? I know we can get the playground equipment.
CDBG, I think the concrete, some of the sidewalks, that amphitheater area, I think that would qualify, you know, and obviously the place structure.
Okay, as we've looked in the in the previous years, when we come up the next cycle for that, and this project here is going to be completed, I'd like for us to prioritize maybe finishing this out with some of the CDBG if we can just kind of put that in a feather in the back of our hat when that time comes.
Yeah, we could definitely put an application in. It's internal, and so it would come through for consideration.
All right, any other questions or comments from up here? All right, we'll go to the public. Any comments from the public?
Can you hear me?
All right. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council for your time today. Thanks, Ben, for working so hard. We had a meeting last week and you and Josh came and we really did put our thinking hats on this project. So I want to thank you for all your time on that. So I am Sandy Drown and I'm my husband and I own the Happy Viking. And so we're in the downtown business district. I'm also a board member. And Ryan Henshaw, who's our president, asked me to come today to speak on his behalf. And so I wanted just to read his letter. Dear Uba City Mayor and managers, council city manager, he's right, we're writing to express Uba City's DBA's strong support of the recommendations made by the city staff regarding the remaining allocations of funding from the Clean Act Grant Program awarded to our community. The thoughtful planning and strategic use of these funds are crucial for enhancing the quality of downtown. The funds present a valuable opportunity for us to invest in essential programs and services that will have a lasting impact. I commend, well, he, Ryan commends the staff, as the DBA does, for their diligent work in identifying key areas where their funds can be utilized efficiently. Their expertise and understanding of our community's needs are invaluable as we strive to create a vibrant and sustainable environment for the community. We believe that the proposed initiatives funded by this grant will not only address immediate challenges, but will also lay the groundwork for long-term improvements in our community. Developing and enhancing public infrastructure infrastructures will contribute significantly to our city's growth and resilience. Thank you for your attention to this time. And can I approach the mayor and give this to you, just so you have it for your records? Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments from the public? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hello, my name is Viet Hong Wong Tran. It's my first meeting here. I just wanted to come and see how it's like. But I didn't have any address or anything, but I do want to talk about this gentleman's project right here. I think just as a representative of the younger generation and whatnot and all that stuff, I think it's a really good idea. And I think it's very important to have something like this, just because like I know, I know that a lot of people that I hear of my generation, the younger generation, they just talk about Uba City not having anything, you know, and that you have to go to like Sacramento or Roseville, went on to go do something. And I know how important it is to just for people to be out and socialize and and to be in a good community or whatnot. And I feel like we need more third-party areas like this, you know? And we don't really have anything like this as of right now. So a lot of people my generation, my age, they just stay inside and they're just isolated from their peers and whatnot. And I understand like funding is a hard thing to get, but I think it's worth putting funding to here because what's more important than funding the future, you know? If we want our community to keep standing strong and keep, sorry, it's my first time doing this, I'm a little nervous, but like, you know, just to keep staying strong and whatnot, we need to build a strong community and whatnot. And I think this would be a good project to invest that into. That's about it.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just had a clarification comment if I could through the mayor. Ben, I just want to confirm, you know, as obviously times are tight, just about every jurisdiction in California these days, I just wanted to confirm that the additional money that you're finding to help shore up some, not all the gap that was submitted by the or through the proposal, it's not discretionary money. This is money meant for specific purposes, and it just can't be used, you know, citywide for anything. These are specific monies for a specific purpose. It's not our general fund discretionary revenue, correct?
Yeah, yes. And so the proposed funds is specific to right-of-way improvements, and it can't, it's that bucket of money that has to be used for concrete drainage work in the right of way.
I appreciate that, Ben. And Mr. Mayor, I just thought it was important to recognize that, that it's not your general fund discretionary revenue that's being spent. It's pots of money that have a specific purpose such as this.
Thanks for that point of clarification, sir. Thank you. Last call for comments from the public. Okay, hearing none, I move it back to the council for further comments or action. Hearing none, I will go ahead and make the motion myself. I move that we award a construction contract to North Star Construction, Uba City, based on the base bid with a reduced scope plus alternate bid, Schedule 1, with reduced scope in the amount of 1.768489 with a 5% contingency and rejection of the bid if not accepted. Authorized city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval to legal by the city attorney, and authorized finance director to make the necessary budget transfers and appropriations to fund the Pluma Street Water Tower Plaza project.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moody. And let's get a park built. Let's move on to agenda item 16, Pluma Street Overlay District. And Mr. Libby, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good to be with you tonight. So the purpose of this item is to consider initiating a amendment to our municipal code to establish an overlay district in our downtown Uba City area. That's from Cluse Avenue, State Highway 20 down to Bridge Street, to prohibit basically smoke and vape shops and businesses that provide for the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption. So our Downtown Business Association and Blue Zones Project have submitted letters to the city asking to establish this overlay, and the the purpose is to promote better health, entertainment, and family-friendly environment. The potential area, you might remember this map, this is comes from when we did the noise exception last summer, so same boundary. So it covers properties primarily along Pluma Street. The overlay district, think of it as just a land use tool. It allows us to add additional requirements, limiting uses to specific properties in addition to the basic zoning that's applied to the property. So if your council were to initiate the change, we would develop proposed language. We would circle back with the DBA and Blue Zones to review it. We would then need to take it to Planning Commission. and Blue Zones to review it. We would then need to take it to Planning Commission and City Council. The good news is when you limit existing uses, it's not going to create a new impact on the environment. So we'd be able to process this change as exempt from environmental rules. So really, the recommendation is to initiate the municipal code amendment to establish the overlay district from State Highway 20 to Bridge Street and along Center Street to prohibit new alcohol, tobacco, and vape retailers, as well as for the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption to promote better health, entertainment, and a family-friendly environment. And we do have representatives from Blue Zones as well as the DBA here. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Any questions from the council? It's called.
I was curious, do you know how many operations are currently, businesses that are vape shops, like smoke shops in the downtown area?
There may be, so let me be clear that this would only prohibit new businesses for coming in. We're not looking at putting any.
Yeah. So my second question was, what would happen if they closed? Would that it also prohibit?
No, great question. So under the municipal code, the zoning code really, if, if the property ceases that use for a period of one year, then that use would then be prohibited. But some, a new retailer comes in, within that one year, they could technically reestablish it. But if you were coming in brand new, then no, you would be prohibited.
Sure. I, Mayor.
I have a follow-up. Why does it have to be one year? Why could it, could it be something less than that?
The one year comes from our current zoning code requirement. And yes, it could be less.
How could it be less if we take action tonight?
Well, we're going to be embarking on a zoning code rewrite later this year. And if council provides me direction, we can make it less than a year.
Understood.
Great. Any other comments from the council? All right, we'll go to the public. We have one speaker card. Marnie Sanders.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just first want to thank Doug Libby for working with Blue Zones and the DBA on this effort. And I just want to also acknowledge the great work of the council just in partnership with the Downtown Business Association and all the great things that are happening downtown, including the Plumas Water Tower Park. I think this all sort of aligns with, with this effort that we hope to continue to move forward. But I am here today, not just representing the, a Blue Zones project, but I am also a downtown, a DBA board member. And I really appreciate the opportunity tonight to, to support that staff recommendation to initiate, initiate this municipal code amendment to establish an overlay district for our Plumas Street corridor. I think this is a really proactive and thoughtful step to help ensure that this really key part of our city remains vibrant, that we're health-forward, and we're family-friendly, as I know that we're all trying to be downtown. Pluma Street, as you know, is more than just a commercial strip. It's the heart of our downtown and a reflection of our community's identity. It's where families gather, small businesses grow, and our neighbors get to connect at big events like our strolls, the summer stroll that's coming up soon, the Christmas stroll, and so many other wonderful events. As we continue to revitalize this space, it's really critical that we consider how land use and business mix are shaped in the downtown that helps support family-friendly and a safe environment for all. At Blue Zones, we are deeply rooted in improving well-being by transforming places where people live, work, and play. We have decades of research around the world of those healthy communities that really shows that environments really matter. When we design public spaces that promote movement, connection, like one of the speakers talked about, this place to connect and purpose, and when we prioritize access to healthy choices, we see lasting benefits for individuals and our broader community. So from this perspective, I think it's really essential that we limit uses that are not compatible with these goals. We strongly support these restrictions on tobacco, vape retailers, as well as those businesses that are selling alcohol for off-site consumption. And I want to be clear, off-site consumption, because we have some great restaurants downtown that serve alcohol. These types of establishments are just not aligned with this walkable, welcoming community that we're, we're focused on. The overlay district is an important opportunity to really affirm our community values and support local business owners who have invested in this area. Both Blue Zones Project and Uba Center, Downtown Business Association are aligned in this effort, and we look forward to working with the city as this proposal moves forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comments or action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to initiate a municipal code amendment to establish an overlay district in downtown Uba City from Calusa Avenue to Bridge Street and along Center Street to prohibit new tobacco and vape retailers, as well as the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption to promote better health, entertainment, and a family, family-friendly environment.
Second.
You have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Thank you, council.
All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 17, which is Planning Division Fee Schedule Update. Mr. Moody, you have the floor again.
All right. So who wants to talk about fees? So good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is in regards to a planning fee schedule update. And so I'll walk through a little bit of the background. Bear with me. It's, it's more wordy than, than visual on this one. So the city's Development Services Department, you know, there's an entitlement function. So the planning division of the Development Services Department, so they handle use permits, retain subdivision maps, you know, development plans, they coordinate those large projects, how they get processed, and then that meet the city standards. And so there's fees associated with that. And so there's, there's notifications, how we submit that information out to the, out to different agencies, how do we notice the property owners, and then how we put things in the newspaper, and then just the staff time. And so there hasn't been an in-depth deep dive into those costs since 2001. And so there's been an inflation index every year where we have applied the CPI. In between there, we've had, you know, since 2001, there's a lot, a lot happened in the world. And so besides things getting more technical, the cost of business getting more complicated and more expensive, and the, the process change is really a big thing. It's just the, what it takes to put conditions of approval and the notifications and coordinating with tribes and different things. And so what we're looking at is that when we're starting to look at our budget and looking at the revenue, it's just, we're not even collecting enough funds when, when we go out to do the notice in the paper. And so it's like, hey, we got to look at these. It's time to adjust these. And so over the last year, we looked at 10 comparable cities, Lincoln, Woodland, Tulare, Manteca, West Sacramento, Rockland, Lodi, Turlock, Madero Davis, you know, and we also, you know, looked at Sutter County, we looked at Uba County, we looked at these. And what we found is that Uba City was at the bottom. And so if you look at that 10, 10 average of those costs, the city was at the bottom of every one of those and not recovering. And so what we did is we came to city council, we kind of talked about initiating a look into this and talking about maybe a strategy on how to get input from the community and set it for full recovery versus kind of a median price. And so what staff has done is we've done that. We've reached out to the development community. It was not a lot of feedback, but we did get some, talking about suggesting implementing the fees incrementally, or questions about maybe discounts for nonprofits. And, you know, we definitely have taken that in, and I want to share you that tonight is, is some of the comments that we did receive. But a lot of, there wasn't a lot of comments. Those two comments out of the 100-plus, you know, kind of qualifying people that we've sent it out to. Here's a visual. It's, it's kind of small, but the green is, is the current Uba City fee. So when you see a general plan amendment, right now, we're probably in around the 3,500 cost. The median is the blue, and that's around 9,000 of those agencies. You know, you have some that are 20,000. This is the average. And so, and so if you look at the green going across, pretty much we're at that, we're below the average, below the median all the way across. We're kind of setting the bar on the bottom. And so looking at these, what we're proposing is to set the fee near the median. And so we looked at those fees. We looked at establishing some of the changes on how the use permits were established, you know, some are major, minor, how we, SB 9 is a new law that came into effect over the last few years about how property is split. And so we looked at that, we looked at the staff time, we looked at the costs, and we're, we're setting them at, at basically median, and that sets about a 60% recovery, on average, about a 60% recovery on it. It's somewhat where we're, is, is roughly what we're trying to recover on these costs. So on this slide, green is the actual cost. The, the blue and the, or the, the current, the blue is the current. The, the, the pink, I guess, is the, is median, and then purple is proposed. So I guess what we'd like to see is the green is the actual cost, the purple is proposed. That's where I was kind of talking about, on average, it's about a 60% recovery. It's a little bit different depending on each, each item. But we're, we're pretty close to the median is how we kind of analyze it and what we recommend it. So with that, the proposed fiscal impact, it pretty much doubles our fee income. And so right now, depending on the year, it's very subjective, depending on how many maps we're processing, depending on how many use permits come through. But on average, we're processing about $100,000 worth of entitlements, if, 120,000. So if you do that projection based on the new fee revenue and kind of did the same thing that we did for last year, it would double it. So it'd be about 240 instead of 120 for this past year. And so with that, I recommend the city council conduct a public hearing to receive comments on proposed planning fee schedule update and adopt a resolution amending the schedule fees. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or specifics related to the matter.
Any questions from the council?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Ben, and those entitlements that you have there, where do you see the most activity in, in any of them? Are they pretty much, pretty spread out over the?
We get a lot of use permits, you know, for driveways. Lately, we've been getting development plans, you know, for the Feather River area, and then subdivisions. Subdivisions take a lot of work. And honestly, they're, they're kind of a mixed bag. I'm looking at Doug, he's, is my planning expert. But a lot of times when, I'm saying subdivision comes through, like West Elmer subdivision's in process right now, it takes a general plan amendment, it takes a rezone, it takes a subdivision map, and then there's an annexation and the end of it, and maybe a development agreement. And so each one's really specific on where they're at. If somebody just comes in and wants to have a, a gym out of their house, you know, something simple, then it's a minor use permit. But the larger developments are definitely get more complex. Where, if you're in the Feather River, why can't I think of the, the complex? They're on Shasta and Bridge Street. It's not Feather River. It's, I don't know, Feather River Mills, Feather River Mills. And so you have, you have lot line adjustments, subdivisions, and you have the rezone and general plan amendment and a special, and then you get into a special specific city amendment. And so it's definitely a mixed bag. So long story, we see probably just as a standard use permits, large projects, they're really a mixed bag of, of depending on the specifics.
So there's no one concentrated area that is more time-consuming and we're losing more money on?
We, we get a lot of time extensions. We don't get a lot of certificate of compliance. Environmental reviews, they're on every single project with the variance use permit plan. So this is definitely one that we're losing money on because the cost of doing environmental review has skyrocketed. We try to do exemptions, but anytime we do a mitigated neck deck, which is pretty often, there's Shannon's time, sometimes there's consultant times. And so that's probably one that we lose a lot of the money on, is an environmental review.
That's one of the top seven, then?
Yeah. And then I would say general plan amendments. There is a lot of effort right now. Somebody says, hey, I don't like my property. I want to change it to the commercial. This is somewhat of a distractor, because if you're real, you're real. And, but it takes a lot of work to do a general plan amendment because of the environmental analysis, because of the notification, because it has to go to Planning Commission and City Council and all the noticing. And that's why that cost is really, it gets up there because of the staff time to make that happen. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, we will open the public hearing for the Planning Division Fee Schedule Update. Anyone from the public that would like to address us on this issue under the public hearing? Anybody from the public that would like to address us on this subject during the hearing? All right, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and move it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to take action on Planning Division Fee Schedule Update, conduct a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed plan fee schedule update, and after consideration, adopt a resolution amending the schedule of fees and changes for planning service beginning fiscal year 2526.
Right. You moved to adopt a resolution.
Well, I moved to make, take action, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moody. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item 18. Is there anything that the council would like to come back at a future council meeting?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Several weeks ago, we, as a group, established, got authorization for an ad hoc committee relative to discussions with healthcare, specifically Adventist Health. Having had the meeting with Mr. Champlin, it seems to me that this is probably something we would want to bring out on more of a broader scope and engage a discussion with all the health providers within our community. And I know Mr. Champlin had agreed to that sort of concept as well. So since we had taken app, action on establishing the ad hoc previously, I think it would probably be appropriate to bring it back on an agenda item in the future to discuss changing this to something more broad, deciding who would be on that ad hoc committee, and then perhaps talking more about scope.
Absolutely agree. It's something based upon our meeting with, with Mr. Champlin. It'd be great to bring it back to figure out where we fit into that wheelhouse and what our position is and what we need to do. So can we do that, Mr. Bindorf, maybe the third? Oh, all right. You got two. Do I have a third? I see five nods. Do you think we might be able to do that on the third? That way we can hit it timely?
Considering the nods, sure, why not?
All right.
We'll get something simple.
Let me guess, you wanted a round of applause, too?
But I'd like to, if I could, Mr. Chair, I, or Mr. Mayor, I would like to work with, I believe you and councilor, Vice Mayor Boom Garden were on that committee. If I can work with you two to make sure I get the staff report exactly right of what you want to achieve in that, I think that'd be great.
I think that'd be perfect.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else? All right. So we've got the healthcare coming back on the third. And then with that, hearing nothing else, let's move to reports. City manager.
All right. I only have a few things that I wanted to comment on this evening, Mr. Mayor, and that is, one, just an experience over the weekend, and I just wanted to say thank you to your Uba City staff. And obviously, I've only been here a short while, but the United Way, which I've been a board member for too long that I want to admit, and actually, I'm proud to admit it, it's a great organization. But we held the Community Resource Fair at San Brendan Park. And I wanted to tell you with the hundreds of people that were there, and Uba City staff were there, so fire had a, one of their trucks out and were greeting people, telling them a little about the fire service in Uba City. We also had folks out there from parks that did a great job in responding to people's requests, keeping things nice and neat. And they did it with such a friendly flair to them. And I was really appreciative of that all day, actually. And then, of course, we had our seniors represented. They had a booth there as well for the resource fair, and it was nice coming over to visit. And they even gave into a little interview when I put the microphone. They all pointed to Tana, I think, and made, made her do it. But it was great to see Uba City represented out there. And everybody that represented Uba City was so professional and just represents your council city very, very well. I was super impressed. So I wanted to comment about that. And then also talk to you about May 27th coming up, that is the budget workshop that we'll be having with the council. that is the budget workshop that we'll be having with the council, I believe it starts at 5:30 that night, is that my right, Sierra, on May the 27th, and otherwise than that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, thank you, we'll come back to the council reports, Councilmember Cole.
Okay, so trying to keep it short, I just want to say, one, before I get to the commission meetings, I finally was able to go on a ride along with Troy, the homeless liaison, and I have been eager to do that since the beginning, and so it was just amazingly informative, and he was a gracious host who just gave me all sorts of good information, we toured the levee area, which was atrocious, but since then, I know that our staff has been working really hard to clean that up and has done an awesome job, I just think it's going to be really effective in getting the draw for people to go down there, so, thank you to Troy and everyone who's been working on the levees. And then, two commission meetings I've attended in the past month, one was Sutter County Children and Families Commission, there was a kindergarten readiness survey given, and it brought a lot of awareness to me, even as a school teacher myself, about how much work that, that organization's doing for this, the children and the families in our area, they are promoting family well-being, language, literacy, they've been in our schools promoting fathers initiatives, we had, they had a community baby shower, and then, of course, helping Plazium to thrive, and also working with the Sutter County Museum to put on the Voyage to Vietnam Tet Festival exhibit, and that will be going on till August, so, great job to them, and then SASSA, the Sutter Animal Services, we had our meeting last week, and pretty much short and sweet, there'll be a ribbon cutting coming up for the barns that they've been building out there, but one of the takeaways was, and thanks to Megan for documenting this for us, but the chickens, so just a little update on the chickens, they're not protected in Yuba City, and there's actually, too, just a reminder of a, Yuba City ordinance, actually, to stop, I guess, the free feeding, it's an ordinance that does not allow that, so if you happen to find chickens on your property, you can trap them or get traps from Sutter Animal Services, and we can all work together to help, I don't know, clean, get rid of the chickens, some people love them, but I think we want less of them overall.
In his absence?
Never mind.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you for that report, that made my evening right there, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to keep brief with my report, it's been a month since we last met, I've been to a slew of ribbon cuttings, takeaway from that is this, this community continues to thrive, which is really, really exciting. Government boards, school district, the meeting was canceled, Gilzeiser, Janus District was canceled because we did not have a quorum. Mosquito approval, we approved to go to a defined contribution plan, from, I'm sorry, from a defined contribution plan to an eligible deferred contribution plan for employees hired after January 2014. Regional Water Authority in Sacramento, we approved the 2025-2026 budget. The North Sacramento Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group in Willows, the meeting, we did not have a quorum, we did not have a quorum, but we met anyways, when we addressed why we didn't have a quorum, I suggested that they go, that they communicate better to their board members, because you go to the website and it's inaccurate, and so I think once the folks that figure out who they're supposed to be on that board, and with county and different counties, I think they'll, they'll be more successful. We did have a presentation from Jerry Brown, not the Jerry Brown, but this gentleman is a director, and the, the construction of the site's reservoir, and for those of you know what that is, it's going to be the newest reservoir in the state of California between the Colusa and Glen County line, they're telling us that there you expect the first shovel to be in the ground at the end of 26, 2026, project should last seven years, once it's filled, it will, it will hold 1.5 million acre feet of water, they also estimate the last couple of winters we've had have been wet enough where it actually filled, would have filled the reservoir up, and that will be a boon to the, the region as far as employing jobs. In transit, we had a meeting, first meeting, we discussed, we had a presentation on an organization called Charging as a Service, so when transit does move towards more of an electric model, the plan theoretically will be to outsource the, the charging service, which will save the organization money. We came toward, let me see, we talked about the commuter service to potentially Lincoln and Roseville because the demand in that part of the, the region is continuing to grow, ridership is rebounding at a clip because of the more jobs, more government workers going back to work in Sacramento. We did have to shelve one item, which was a comparative agreement for, for the affordable housing and sustainable committee grant program, and we deferred that item to this Thursday for a special meeting because we needed a little bit more time to study that item more thoroughly. There is a, there is a timeline on that item, for that grant, so a decision needs to be made, I think the timeline for that is the middle of June, so we will have a special trans meeting this Thursday. I would like to close my statements by recognizing staff's amazing efforts to put up the hometown banners along Bridge Street, if you haven't seen the, the new ones up there, you should because you might recognize my dad who's up there, and also the continued efforts with the city, the county, and Levy District to clean up our river bottoms, thank you, thank you, thank you, and that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor, my two committees was with the Yuba-Sutter Air Quality Control Board, we went over our audit, there were no findings, the second thing was the budget, we recently, because of the May revise, which we hadn't seen before, which came out, I guess, yesterday, I got an email this afternoon that there is going to be a substantial reduction in the grants for, like, school districts getting buses, farm program and the such, so the, the May revise has taken a toll on air quality control. SASSA meeting, my colleague has fully explained about the chickens. It was, it was quite the debate, that was, biggest part of the debate of the whole meeting was about the chickens, because it is affecting people's properties, people moving out, giving notice that the chickens are just uncontrollable, and I'm moving out of this, I mean, it's affecting people, landlords and the such, so it is an issue. On the other things that I did is, Saturday, I went out to the MONG 50th Year Anniversary of their, I guess, exodus, and of those gentlemen that served alongside of our military and protected them, it was very moving and learned a lot, learned a lot about my misconceptions of what actually went on over there and who the, the MONG community actually is, very good celebration, very well attended. Went to the Vietnamese opening at the museum, it was very, very, very nice, if you don't, if you get a chance, please go, it's very interesting and it's very well done. Went to the Amplah ribbon cutting, what a state-of-the-art facility, I mean, you could plant that thing in any metropolitan area and it would, it would not be something that was, that would not stand out, very beautiful, and it's starting to address some of those medical issues, services that we have in our community, which I've heard loud and clear from a lot of constituents. Also, I'd like to close with a remembrance of a gentleman that started a business years ago in this city, pharmacist, Mr. George Nicolau, 106 years old, he was amazing, he was an amazing gentleman, he mentored me when I went on the Yuba Community College Board, very supportive, very insightful gentleman, I just wanted to express my condolences to the Nicolau family, and that would conclude my report.
Thank you, sir, Vice Mayor.
Okay, lots of stuff since we talked last, predominantly, the big thing, one of the big things anyway, was a cap-to-cap tour, this included a pre, pre-cap-to-cap visit through the, the communities of Alexandria Falls Church, et cetera, and to see how those communities have been reinventing themselves with doing things rather innovatively, for instance, grocery stores on the first floor, residential's on the, on the subsequent floors, and one that, that really shocked me, I'd heard about, but I never saw it, was a fire station on the first floor, and housing units on the second, third, and fourth stories. So there, there's a lot of stuff that, that I think sometimes we don't necessarily look at because it's not common here, but this mutual use thing that, that's going on in the East Coast is something that potentially, I think, could have some utility here in California. As far as the actual cap-to-cap, had the opportunity to meet with either representatives or the, the member himself, Lamal, Doug Lamalfo's office, Kevin Kiley's office, John Garamendi's office, the Department of Transportation, Ami Barra, and Kevin Kiley did a presentation, and there's a lot of opportunities to network, the theme of cap-to-cap was not necessarily asking for funds, but maintaining those funding opportunities that, that already exist, because as you all know, there's a lot of stuff going on back in Washington DC in regards to funding, those funds do come down through two cities, and right now, we've, we've experienced that with one of our local flood projects being recalled already. Speaking of Sabu F. Gus, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, at the meeting, we do have a project that is going to get, it's actually kicked off, but we're going to be highlighting that, it's called the Tudor Flood Risk Reduction Project on May 28th, this is down off Sacramento Avenue, this is a last piece on the south edge of our basin to get completed, they're trying to get a 100-year flood protection down in that area, so this project thankfully is moving forward, there's still another one out there that, that was, the money was rescinded from, but if you're interested in coming out, learning about it, it'll be May 28th, 10 o'clock in the morning. At LAFCO, we recently annexed 8.85 acres, I think it was, on Elmer Road into the city, there is a little, I'll call it a little peninsula there, one of the residents opted not to, to come into the city, I'm hopeful that over time, perhaps that person changes their mind, this is Tiara Estates, I'm looking at Doug because, help me, 30, 30 units potentially? 31, 31 units, and, you know, a lot of, of good discussion regarding traffic out there, which again, and I know I've mentioned this to the City Manager, we, we do need to get going on that Tiara ad hoc on, on traffic. Let's see, what else do I got here, I attended a meeting, initial meeting, inaugural meeting of the North State Leadership Coalition, this was something that's, that was put forward by Congressman Lamalfo, in attendance were, was Assemblyman Gallagher, Representative Wendell Anderson from Yuba County, representatives from Chico City Council, Redding City Council, various Orville City Council, the idea here is to see if they can get a bunch of us together to represent the North State, you all should, should give it a shot when they have the next meeting, if you have time on your schedule, good networking, I'm not going to call it like CACOG, but I'm going to call it a lot along the same lines, and this is why Doug Lamalfo was for it, is you guys have a voice and you need collectively to get together to, to, to use that voice. At, at CACOG, we are, we are one week away, hopefully, from being one of 10 of agencies in the CACOG region of being approved for a mobility zone, so I'm going to take a moment as Ben's still here, his staff was highlighted as the 23 mobility zones were initially selected, these are areas that CACOG's got a grant to do some, some pretty significant transportation studies in, ours is one of the final 10, CACOG's full board will hopefully approve that next Thursday, and then they'll be working with us on opportunities, and the area that, that Yuba City is sort of, goes back and forth between districts, District Five and District Four, so the 1, 3, or 1, 2, and 3, unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't make the cut, but the others, the, the boundaries of this mobility zone if approved, Franklin on the north, Stewart on the south, Sanborn on the west, and of course, the, the river on the right, on the east side of the, speaking about transit, still based upon what I'm hearing from these other fiscal cliffs, the Yolo Transit and SAC Transit, still would be nice to hear from, I think it's the Executive Director of Yuba-Sutter Transit, you know, how are they doing? I'd love to, and there's a ribbon cutting coming up, they've got something else, it'd be nice if perhaps they could come to our meeting like Mr. Champlin did and, and chat, so we have it on, on video for everybody. And I will follow up, you know, and I've said this before, and it's not meant to cause any grief, but there's an untold story in Yuba City, and Amplah is part of that, and there's some other structures that are going up, and I see they've broke ground now over by Dutch Brothers and Canes, there's a lot of, and houses are going up, there's a lot of stuff that's going on in Yuba City, and it's easy to, for people, I think, oh, what's going on over there, and focus, drill in on Yuba County, which is great, I'm happy for them over there, but there's just as much or more activity happening within Yuba City right now, and it just doesn't seem like we get it, and I know Christie does a great job of trying to tell the story, but, you know, I think sometimes if you don't celebrate what's going on, people don't know, and there are good things happening in Yuba City. And finally, I definitely want to follow up with Councilmember Pasquale on Mr. Nicolau, but I would also like to, to perhaps close in remembrance of another business person, long-term business person, long-term Kiwanis member, Mr. Del Heffley, who was very much a champion of giving back to the community, but a very successful business person as well, and with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, it has been quite a while since we were here, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to sum it up because a lot of my stuff's already been covered as we cover each other. Lots of ribbon cuttings, and I go back to Amplah Health, gorgeous building, service that is needed here in our community, but to Mr. Moody and Mr. Libby, kudos to you and your teams, the GC that ran that project just raved, and they do a lot of different projects across, and they said they loved dealing with Yuba City, it was easy, it was, they just raved on you guys right there above everybody else, so, thank you for being nimble and adjusting there, and, but yeah, lots of ribbon cuttings going on, and, you know, to Amplah Health and all the other businesses, we've been extending our thanks because, you know, those businesses get the vote with their dollars of where they want to invest, and they're investing in our community, so we definitely want to say thank you to that. We attended the National Day of Prayer, cap-to-cap, lots of things going on there, which the Vice Mayor covered, the, the message was loud and clear, in years past, it's always about, you know, give us more, give us more, this year was just, please stop cutting and maintain, especially the vital stuff that's there, so, but a lot of good meetings there, which will lead me into a lot of the work we've done on the budget ad hoc committee, we've spent days upon days upon days, that will be coming up, you know, we are, we're like any other municipality, we're facing challenging times, if you look at the newspaper, you look at Sacramento, you look at others, everybody is in the same boat in California, but we are going to face it head-on, we're going to be bringing not only the picture of where we're at, but options of where we're going to be looking forward, and it's going to be a year of continually looking forward and figuring this out as we go. So, along those lines, I'll give you a little perspective, and I want to have a shout-out to Washington DC's Fire Department and their ambulance service, because we had a little medical emergency back there that we had to pull out of cap-to-cap for a couple of days, but we take a lot of things for granted, every time our rigs roll here and stuff for medical aid, we never send them a bill, do we, Mr. Bindorf? I haven't seen those bills go out, but I tell you, DC, I don't, I don't, I'm thankful for them being there for my wife, but we've been back a few days and I just got a bill for $1,900. So, let that sink in for just a second, every time we call for medical aid, for medical assist, you know, forget the house burning down, just medical aid. down, just medical aid. They were there. I'm thankful that they were there. But I got a bill for $1,900 and we don't send any of our people bills. So, think about the value of the service for that for a few minutes. The Adventist meeting went very, very well. Looking forward to more of those between members of the council and the leadership because we're partners and we need to look and see how we're addressing things that we collaboratively work together on. Sabuca, we do have the ribbon cutting coming up there. And during this time, I've also continued all my communications with all of our labor groups because, as we stated back in January, we're going to get through this budget situation all together. And we're not going to run in silos. So, we've maintained all those open lines of communication, myself and our city manager, meeting with them and having that open dialogue with what their concerns are, just knowing we're, we're all looking forward trying to resolve this. With that, the gentleman's name, Mr. McClow?
Nicolau.
Nicolau. George, George Nicolau. Okay. With that, I agree. And I think tonight we need to close in honor of Mr. George Nicolau and Mr. Del Heffley, as they've definitely had an impact with people on this dais. And with that, we will adjourn from our regularly scheduled meeting and we will resume in five minutes the closed session back in the Sutter Room. So, in honor of George Nicolau and Del Heffley, we close in our honor tonight.